One second. Patty? Discussion? Here we go.
Hello?
Patty?
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasich?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Tancer?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, I guess we're gonna bring this meeting to order again and go into our regular agenda. Just for the information for all of you, we used to have our organizational meeting January 1st, January 2nd, but we've combined both of them this year for the very first time. So we had the reorganization meeting, and one of the things that we did in the reorganization meeting was to have resolutions that grant our superintendent and treasurer the powers they need to perform their jobs. Mr. Tancer, would you like to read those resolutions that you're good at?
Okey dokey. That's a bad... Sorry. (laughing). To give the authority of the superintendent to carry out policy as adopted by the Board of Education, to establish a third Wednesday of each month at 6:00 PM for regular meetings of the Board of Education in the boardroom at 100 Botware Street, to set Board of Education's service fund at $5,000, shall not exceed $20,000, to designate the Town Crier and The Vindicator as the district's official newspaper, to waive the reading of the record of proceedings of each month, to use Robert's Rule of Orders in absence of board policy, to authorize treasurer to pay bills within adopted appropriations, to adopt...to appoint liaisons for 2015.
We don't have to have a vote on that, right?
No, we do.
Oh, we do?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolutions as read.
Second? Discussion? Patty?
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasich?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Tancer?
Yes.
Mr. Bova?
Yes. Principals reports, who wants to speak first?
You can do liaisons, we're gonna do this the next week.
Okay. I think we need really just...excuse me, we need to discuss whether we wanna do that or we wanna have building management.
Whatever you wanna do?
We could do it for workshops.
Okay. All right.
Who's the president?
No, I just asked.
Good evening, everyone, happy new year, congratulations, Mr. Bova. Hilltop Elementary School Building Management, our 3rd and 4th grade staff will be meeting with representatives from the County ESC on February 10th to go through Park and Air Test Administration training. Pre-coming down, our 3rd and 4th graders are preparing for the new Park and Air assessments. Testing will begin in the last week of February, and we'll be doing several full-length practice tests over the next couple of weeks, not only to test what our kids know, but to test our technology, to make sure that everything will work when it comes to testing as we go forward in February, March, April, and part of May with the new Park and Air assessments. I wanna thank a lot of people for what...a lot of work that's being done on the Park and Air Assessment, started with Mr. Tulio, Candy Reed, Lynette Bradley, our guidance counselors at all the schools, the maleages, and my fellow beneficiaries. I mean, there were something every day as far as updates. Today we had a long email discussion on some of the procedures going on. There's a lot of people behind the scenes getting a lot of things done to be ready for these assessments. And we'll be successful because our teachers have a lot of our kids ready, but we'll be successful also because a lot of people putting hard work in to make sure that this testing goes smoothly. So I wanna thank all the people behind us who are doing work to get this ready. Stakeholder communication with Hilltop, our Hilltopper went out after some delays due to weather on January 12th. Report cards will be sent home on January 23rd, which is next Friday, and then parent teacher conferences will be held on February 5th and Monday, February 9th, both nights at 4:00 to 7:00 PM. Some other upcoming events, our students have been fingerprinted this week by Officer Verstappen, putting together identification kits for parents. Friday, the 16th, this Friday is the end of the 2nd grading period, and again, like I said, our report cards go home the following week. Thursday, January 22nd, from 6:00 to 8:00 at Mr. Anthony's Invoirmen is our annual dinner with Dad. I like to invite the board members to be there, it's a great event. You have kids everywhere, and Dad's all standing in the corner, talking about the latest football game, playoffs, Super Bowl, Ohio State, and not having any idea where their kids are. But it's a great night. The couple moms from the PTO are there, they keep everything running real well. We have two PTO general meetings, one is on Thursday evening, January 29th at 7:00 PM, the other is the next morning, Friday, January 30th at 9:30 AM, and it's our PTO general meeting. Our PTO is an outstanding organization, they do great things for our kids and for our school, and we wanna support them. Monday through Friday, January 2nd, or, I'm sorry, February 2nd through 6th is our annual Jump Rope for Heart. Mrs. Maggard gets our kids involved in that, and they raise a lot of money for the American Heart Association, so that event will be taking place early February. And lastly, I know it's a while away, but give you some time to buy some things for your certificate. Our Valentine's Day parties are Thursday, February 12th, and Valentine's Day, and then will be Saturday, February 14th. So, again, a lot going on for a short fairy time in the cold winter here. Thank you.
I'm sorry. I spread something in here, I just wanted to comment on that you are having with your 4th grade students in Hour of Code.
We had that right before break, we did.
I...what I hope to be is my future granddaughter, I'm praying very heartily on this, she goes to school in New Jersey, she's in kindergarten, and they are coding already in kindergarten. I would really encourage us to look into that, to see, I can't tell you how many people I've talked to that are looking for, you know, computer coding abilities to get a job. So I just noticed that that's a great, great start.
We did have news coverage, 27 was there doing the story. Our kids had a great time. I wanna thank my son, who's a freshman, or sophomore, he's a sophomore for me, I know my kids. He came, they had the day off, and he came and he helped our kids do it. He was part of that activity with his school, and he came and helped our kids and had a really good time working with our kids, and they had a good time with the coverage.
Joe, since you were talking about coding, would you explain to those of us who don't know what coding is, but only have like maybe an idea, very simply tell us what that is?
Sure. Every computer program you use, every app you use on your phone is a set of directions called code, and coding is the process of writing a computer program, an app for your cellphone, it's the language of computer.
Okay. John, how much for you?
Good evening, everybody. I'll just kinda piggyback off of Mr. Maroni there. With the Hour of Code, I actually even had a parent come up to me earlier this week and said that one of her children's Christmas gifts that they wanted after doing an Hour of Code and getting their feet wet with it, they want a machine that they can start doing computer programming on. So one of our 4th graders' parents went out, bought him a device, and now he's sitting at home and already honing and practicing those skills to get ready for middle school and robotics in the future. So it just shows how a little bit of interest that you provide to the students, and they want to take it where they will. And I mean, I was pretty impressed with some of these 4th graders and what they were able to accomplish just in that short hour that they had working with it. So it was very, very impressive. Good evening, everybody. With CH Campbell this month, we also have a lot going on, most of it you've heard about from Mr. Maroni already. We are gonna be having our beach day in January, that's gonna be coming up next week, it's a day we encourage kids to dress in a little bit warmer attire. We still encourage them to wear their winter coats to school, but they also bring in picnic blankets, and they'll sit down and have a picnic-style lunch. We play games like beach volleyball over in the gym afterwards for recess, and just have the kids have a little bit of time, play some nice summer music, Beach Boys and things of that nature in the cafeteria as they eat. So just a chance to give them a special event where they can have a little bit of fun, help them bring some warmth this cold, cold January. So our dinner with that is also gonna be coming up here at the end of the month, and the PTO actually secured a person named Rick Smith Jr., and he's actually from America's Got Talent. He was on that show and recognized. I guess he progressed pretty well through that, but they hired him and brought him in as the entertainment, so we're definitely looking forward to that. I'm sure the kids will be a little bit more excited to see some magician with a little bit of extra ability there than some of the ones we've had in the past. So, that being said, the PTO has been very, very hard at work on our STEM Week, and they're preparing a series of STEM-related activities that they're having all of the students K through 4 go through. They'll be learning through experimentation, it's really gonna be a positive experience, and the PTO parents were actually there last night until after 7 o'clock, working on the experiments, trying to get them all to work properly and preparing for that event for our students, so we're really looking forward to that as well. We have the Canfield Police Department coming in to do the identikit and fingerprint our students for parents coming up next week, so they'll be in there as well. With our students, we do have report cards coming up, they're gonna be sent home on January 23rd, and the Mahoning County Educational Service Center has also been at CH Campbell throughout this entire month, working with our staff and even with our students on preparing them for the park assessments that are gonna be coming. Recent legislation changed it so that our 3rd grade students are only gonna be taking the math park assessment, they'll take the OAA for reading, so there was a slight change there, but they've still been coming out and preparing our students for that math portion in 3rd grade. So they've been doing a fantastic job, and our teachers really are doing as much as they possibly can to inform the students, show them the tools that they're gonna need to use, so when they sit down in front of those computers, they're gonna be ready to do their best, and I'm sure they will. Curriculum Council met earlier today under Mr. Tulio, and we were able to get some of our teachers to go out and visit Hudson Schools. They're gonna be going out next week to visit to look at math curriculum and bring back their thoughts to determine what direction our district needs to move in for that. The Smile Station, that's a mobile dental clinic, is gonna be coming out to offer free service to any students that need dental work, so they'll be coming out, I believe it's later on next week, and providing that service to our students. And then our monthly staff meetings have really been focused on, again, the implementation of guided reading, ensuring that that program's being implemented with fidelity this year, and also working on these upcoming park assessments. We've dedicated a pretty large amount of time to educating our staff on that as well. So that's what's going on at CH. If you have any questions or ever want to stop by, please, I encourage you to do so. Have a lot of fun there, so.
Good evening. Just as Travis said, we met with Teaching and Learning Committee today under the direction of Mr. Tulio to set the visits up in the other high achieving districts as far as researching math programs. At CVMS, we have a Building Leadership Team meeting tomorrow, as well as grade level and content meetings, and what we're doing is we're doing a needs inventory for the staff to see what they need as far as preparing to do the assessments starting next month, and we're gonna triage those needs and provide the necessary PD based on their input. We're continuing to meet in grade levels and contents on a consistent basis, just aligning standards both vertically and horizontally, as well as preparing for the upcoming assessments. We're preparing all 16 Chromebook cards for use during the assessments. We'll be able to test two full grades at one time because we have one Chromebook for every two students. We'll start those tests the last week of February, and if you wanna see the test dates, email me, I'll send those to you. The testing schedule is in place, and the testing will run through mid-May. CVMS is sending a team on February 2nd to Independence to learn the latest info about assessments at both Park and AIR, and we're planning professional development for the staff on test administration. Actually, the test manual just came out a couple of weeks ago for Park, so we are quickly and feverishly reading through that, learning it, and planning professional development based on what's right around the corner. Public relations, another parent newsletter will be coming out with report cards next week, and we are starting a parent advisory group that's going to also work closely with the PTO to try to get more parents involved at CVMS. I know they come from the elementaries and they're very involved, and the middle school, there seems to be a little bit of a feeling that they're not quite as involved, so that's going to be starting either late January or early February. Please have people email me if they're interested in being part of that, it's not an exclusive group, it's really anybody who would like to just be more involved with the middle school. Dave Mullane came to the middle school today to teach me how to update the new website, which I think is outstanding, nice job, Dave. And I...so bear with me, I'm trying to slowly learn it and keep it updated, so if there's something that you see on there that's blaringly incorrect or something that stands out, I won't be offended, just email me, I'll make sure that I fix it. Staff and student life, we had our spelling bee Monday, December 22nd. It never ceases to amaze me what our kids can spell, and I cannot. We had a grade level winner, grade 5, 6, 7, and 8, as well as an overall winner. Grade 5, we had Jake Johnson, grade 6, Maggie Carter, grade 7, Audra Pesco, and grade 8, Hafsa Hassan. Overall winner was Jessica Lee. And I'm not sure if the Galactic Art graphics showed up on yours, it did show up on mine when I printed it, but we did have some students who won Galactic Art Award, and their art's going to be displayed at Youngstown State, and several of them made honorable mentions. Abigail Palmer, Joe Scolari, Shane Donaramo, Riley Maddox, Aiden Jones, Hushy Patel, and Holly Everly, they were all honorable mentions, and we had Anna Dudashe, who was a Silver Key winner, Stefania Marsiniak, Silver Key, and Amelia A. was a Gold Key winner. Also, I wanna say Karen Eastman started as our head custodian at CVMS, she's doing a wonderful job, working very hard. She's telling us that the snow followed her because the minute she started, she had to work on the sidewalks, so she's doing a really good job. She's fitting in with the staff, and I just wanted to commend her for that.
How old was the overall winner? What grade?
8.
Can I ask you a question based on one of the things Mara said?
Maybe.
All right. The testing that you're talking about, how does that work? Is it a...I know my daughter's coming up to semester tests, so you have two blocks a day, how does it work at like the middle school level? Is it a period? Is it all day?
Well, it depends on, you could have a youngster that needs extended time, depending upon a need of the student, so it could last longer than a lot of timeframe, but the way it is this year, since it's going to be online, there's gonna be a period of time where a youngster's gonna have the screen available to them, and it will then kick off after the period of time, depending upon the assessment that they're taking.
Really?
And they will not, no longer be able to continue the test, so it's set forth pretty stringent when it comes to the time required.
But is it an all-day thing?
No, it is not. It is not. It's longer, that's, and that's a lot of the questions that they're trying to work out now at each building, so it could be a block plus, it could be a couple periods, so it's gonna have to be scheduled around what that time allotment is, so it's not an exact...it doesn't fit into our schedule very well, we're gonna have to make some adjustments. And then we could, we could start it, have the right time in the morning, but to start the assessment in the afternoon, we might not have enough time to finish it, maybe at the high school, so there's gonna, there's conversation there to how are they gonna allot that appropriate amount of time, so.
You know, along those same lines, I'd just like to, again, ask you, but the fact that we postponed semester tests at the high school, what does that do to?
Standardize tests in the...
No, our schedule. I mean, they're supposed to be Thursday and Friday, and they're Tuesday and Wednesday, right?
Gives staff ample opportunity to get enough assessments in, to assess the youngsters, give them the appropriate grade that they deserve, and then also, you're exactly right, the exams as well.
I mean, does that follow our...
It doesn't, because our second semester really is a couple days more than the first semester.
Okay.
So that really fell in line pretty well.
Okay. Thanks.
And that's been done a lot, because of snow.
Yeah.
It's been done many, many times.
Yes. And the guys definitely spoke with staff, and that was, that was a one for them, and that accommodated their need that way.
Mara, I think this is an excellent idea, parent advisory group. Could you keep a surprise of what's going on there? How many people you got in?
Sure.
It might be a model for some other schools, too. Is it during lunch? Wouldn't the parents always have lunch with the grade school kids? They can't anymore?
I haven't decided, I don't know if it's evening is the best time after school.
Mr. President, if I could?
I'm working through that.
On the resolutions, I realized I missed one, Mrs. Kessler brought it to my attention down here. Resolution number nine, limit Mr. Olson to one statement per meeting, under one minute of talking, whichever comes first. I'd like to make a motion to pass the resolution, I may...can I please have a second?
Second?
I am at 41...
Discussion?
I'm at 41.
No discussion.
You've been timing myself. I apologize. No, 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 one and or 60 seconds, you're three in already, Mr., which means the next two months, you're done.
I'm dealing with the president, not you.
Okay, let's continue here. What happens? You become president, look what happens.
Gets out of control.
Who's next up?
Dave, over. Dave, over.
We have a few interesting items this week, or this month for you, rather. We're trying a lot at the high school to get positive publicity for things that our students are doing, to get the word out about their great accomplishments, and with that, I'd like to thank our reporters from The Vindicator and the Town Crier that are here. They've been just so helpful in taking those stories and getting that word out there. And right now, tonight, if you, you're here now, so you're not gonna get to see it, but on the 6 o'clock news, there's gonna be a story about one of our freshmen, Jackson Horbat, he actually wrote a novel in 8th grade, and it's now published, and it's available online on Amazon and Barnes &amp; Noble, as well as in our local Barnes &amp; Noble store. And so we're getting a lot of coverage from that, I know JT's coming out tomorrow to do a story on him, so you'll be able to catch that tonight, I believe, at 10 on Fox, but it was on at 6 o'clock this afternoon on WKPN, so we're all proud of him. Something interesting that's kind of in development right now is, we spoke with The Vindicator, and one of our students, Delaney Bresnahan, wrote a column for our school newspaper called "A Week Without," where she gave up things for a week, and then kinda wrote about that introspectively. And so I presented the idea to The Vindicator, and they were on board, she's gonna actually be presenting a column now in our Canfield Neighbor's Paper, which is a great opportunity for her, so we're really, really excited for her and that opportunity. And I think too, I wanted to mention to you that the robotics team found out what their project is. It's pretty wild, they have to stack, I believe, Mr. Maudavon Helby was at four recycling bins on top of one another, then they have to put a barrel on top of those four recycling bins, and then put a pool noodle inside the barrel. So they're scheming and fighting about what the best idea might be to conquer that challenge. I know they're, they're pretty excited about that right now over at our place. And lastly, if you follow us on Twitter, please go on and vote for one of our swimmers. Name's escaping me, I believe. Let me check Twitter real quick, if you don't mind. Connor Brady is nominated for JJ Huddle this week, so if you follow us on Twitter, please go vote for him, so maybe he can get recognized by JJ Huddle. Mr. Maudavon?
Very good. Big thanks for the support of the board on the robotics team. I can't tell you in three years what Mr. Crumb has done, and the interest generated among the students, it's just been phenomenal. And Don Crumb, he goes above and beyond with robotics, he's just a tremendous advisor, but we would like to thank the board for their support of that new initiative, that new project. We have a lot of things, I'll tell you, there's never a dull moment at the high school, every month is just packed with activities. One really exciting thing, it's gonna be this Friday, two days from now, January 16th, we have a home boys' basketball game versus Howland, but in the auditorium, we also have something called Synergy of the Arts, and I don't know if anybody's familiar with that. It's a fundraiser, Becky Hakinen with Canfield Players. 25 students, Canfield High School, perform all kinda different artistic endeavors, it's kinda like a talent show, but it's unique, and she got this reading a trade magazine from New York, and basically, this event, although it's coming Friday, it began in September when an artist in our school opens a fortune cookie, and that student, her name was Nicole Noakes, she had one week to use the saying on the fortune cookie as her inspiration to perform and create an artistic piece. In her case, it was ballet dance. And then, after that, at the end of the week, she shares her dance with the next student, Mackenzie Wright, who then created a poem based on Nicole's dance, and then it moves through with all those kids. It is really, really cool, and if you get a chance to come out and see it, I'll be bopping back and forth from the basketball game to the auditorium. There's so many activities, that was the only time we could do it, and it's tremendous, it's a fundraiser, and we'd love to have you come by and see this, these talented, talented kids. Earlier this year, we put on...
What time?
I'm sorry, 7:30. Is it 7:30 in the auditorium? Earlier this year, we put on Ragtime, and I think we had Dr. Hakinen come and talk about that. So after the performance was over, about a week later, I get a phone call from one of our parents, her name is Mrs. Burdman, B-U-R-D-M-A-N. She is involved with the Youngstown Jewish Outreach Organization, and she complimented the school district and the kids with the performance of Ragtime as a great opportunity to show diversity to our kids, expose them to something that was not in the ordinary Canfield life. So she was very thrilled about that, and long story short, we will have on, let me get the date right, January 22nd, which is actually gonna be the first new date, we have an opportunity, and we took this opportunity to bring in a gentleman, his name's Irving Roth, and he is an actual Holocaust survivor, who's gonna speak to, not all of our kids, not the whole school, there's a variety of reasons why, but we took the English, students in English class during that block and in history class, and he's gonna talk at YSU, he's a fascinating topic. He runs an organization called Adopt a Survivor. It's worldwide, he's 90 years old, but he was an adjunct, he's a professor at a university in New York. Just a tremendous opportunity. January 22nd, 9 o'clock, you're all invited to come and see this Irving Roth speak, it's just gonna be a tremendous opportunity for our kids, and he'll answer questions and do a lot of good things. Very happy and thankful to Mrs. Burdman and the Jewish Outreach Organization in Youngstown, who kinda supported this and put this on. Lot of exciting news, how about this one? I came over here, and I had a meeting, after the meeting, I walked back in the office, and the lights were all on, and people were working in there, and they're putting the finishing touches on our PA system. So, oh God, are we excited, we're just thrilled, and hopefully, very shortly, we'll have some really good sound in all the areas of the building, and we're just very excited about that, but I was talking to the workers today, so that's exciting. We have, one of my favorites, Spirit Week is coming up, January 26th, and we'd like to invite Mr. Bova, if he'd like to come Spirit Week and help us out.
I get a pie in my face.
But that's another thing with Canfield High School, we have Dinner Theater, January 24th, which Mrs. Scourge puts on, which is always a magnificent evening. That takes us into February, I don't know when the next board meeting we'll be at, but February, excuse me, it's February 7th, we have the Sweethearts Dance at the Embassy, which is always a good time. Actually, boy, we're in parent teacher conferences for the second semester, February 12th, and already, February 19th, we have 8th grade orientation, where we'll be talking to the 8th grade administrator, the middle school administration, and working on bringing those kids over and their parents for an evening to discuss the transition between the 8th grade, so, thank you.
The Board of Education would really like to extend their gratitude to all the principals who've come in here in the passion that you display here about what you're doing. It's very much appreciated, I know it's a long day for you, so thank you from all of us.
And I also wanna thank, I'm sure it's you two guys, I would like to thank you for allowing the teachers, the math teachers, to go and take a look at Hudson. I think that's great, that we go to somewhere else and see how it's done, and I, hopefully all our departments will be able to do that at one time or another, because, you know, steal whatever you can, that's what I say. If it makes us better, so thank you, I just want to thank you. And everybody, the inconvenience it's gonna be for everybody, that's, to have a whole department gone, it's not easy.
Stay warm.
Yeah, stay warm.
Next on our agenda, we have Treasury Report for December.
Presentation of minutes?
We're not, okay, presentation of minutes, I'm just new at this job, you know, I've only been here for four years.
All you gotta do is read film.
You're a bad...
I love it.
Okay, who's left? Those goddamn...
They haven't spoken yet.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. I hear the second. Second. Discussion.
Mr. Fry?
Uh, yes.
Mrs. Lasich?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Tancer?
Yes.
Mr. Bova?
Yes. Now, can we have the Treasury Reports for December?
On the green appropriation report, halfway through the year, and on the last page, we're at 50% spent plus uncovered toward our budget, so on track after six months. The check payment register on page 3... The check payment register, on page three, toward the bottom, NEF Company for $6,800. That was for steam line repair work we had done at the middle school. Patrick Logan. Patrick Logan, about six above that, for $4,400. That's for all the painting and lining of the fields for the whole season, starting in July through December. He waits and gives us a bill in December all the time. Any other questions on the check payment register? Purchase order register, new items start on page nine. And I wanted to point out the two purchase orders for the PA system that Mr. Moldovan was talking about, SoundCom Systems, about in the middle of the page, $38,000, and then the additional, down on the bottom of page 10, for the alternate one bid, $17,000. So, I know that's just about done, so price it on the check payment register next month.
Did they get a lot of it done during the holidays?
They've been working on, when school's not in session, pretty much.
They're trying to get, they have been going from about 2:30 to midnight recently. They're going to have their final push this coming weekend, hopefully by Tuesday morning, be able to use new, so looking forward to that. They've really run into, as you can tell, as you can imagine, with the old system. A lot of new wires needing to be run, speaker system, so it's, it's good to have the bid ahead of time, I can tell you that, because then they're tying themselves into a figure. So, it's very, very comforting to know we have that.
It's not just about the PA system, being able to communicate, it's being able to communicate to every room in the school system, it's about safety more than anything else. And before we could not communicate with every room in that school, or every area in that school.
And then, no changes on the investment report, same investments are listed there, and the rates are pretty much the same, and star in the farmer's money market, so. Any questions on any thing?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Treasury Report.
Second.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasich?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Chancer?
Yes.
Yes. I think we have two people signed up to talk? We do, or we don't?
No, we do not.
Okay, that's good.
I'll talk if you want.
No!
Okay, well, just ask.
Special recognition.
And we would definitely like to do this. Every January, the Ohio School Boards Association sets aside its School Board Appreciation Month. Well, it should be done whether they set it aside or not, because we're very fortunate to have board members who come together for the betterment of the school system. And it's great to know, you hear wonderful activities going on in the school system, wonderful upgrades, different things to improve our district as a whole. That doesn't happen without you folks. And we appreciate your support, and there is a proclamation that, if you don't mind me reading, I'd like to read for you, that we have designed here, and I'll read it as such. I won't have Mr. Chancer read this one. Again, it's a proclamation to recognize the Canfield Local School Board of Education, January 22nd, which now it is, as you know, not the 22nd, but this is when it was set up for. Whereas it shall be the mission of the Canfield Local School District to provide all students with the best possible education, and whereas the School Board sets the direction for our community's public schools by envisioning the community's education's future, and whereas the School Board sets policies and procedures to govern all aspects of the school district's operation, and whereas the School Board keeps attentions focused on progress towards the school district's goals and maintains a two-way communication loop with all segments of the community, and whereas serving on a school board requires an unselfish devotion of time and service to carry on the mission and business of the school district, and whereas the School Board must respond on behalf of the community to the educational needs of students, and whereas the School Board voluntarily accepts the above-mentioned responsibilities. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Alex Jordan, do hereby proclaim, January 15th, January 2015, as School Board Recognition Month in the Canfield School District, I encourage all citizens to publicly and privately thank the School Board members for all of the school district servicing this community for their dedicated service to our children. So, folks, thanks for your help, thanks for your dedication, and we have some certificates here before you leave tonight. Thanks again.
Okay, under new business.
Thank you, sir. It is recommended that we accept the resignation of the license employees, that's your exhibit number one, Nancy Julia, CVMS art teacher, effective July 1, 2015, requesting retire, rehire, that's your exhibit one A. Mary Lou Thacker, CVMS, grade six teacher, effective July 1, 2015, also she will be requesting retire, rehire, that's your exhibit one B. We also have a couple other personnel to notify you about. B, we have Sandy Calvin, transfer from a 2.33-hour transportation aid to 3.5-hour transportation aid, effective 1/15/15. Lisa Stefanic, transfer from CHS custodian to weight room custodian, effective 1/15/15. And also, we would like to recommend for hire Stan Huddleston, bus driver at $18.37 per hour, effective 1/15/15.
Okay, we have a lot of items there. Do you want to do these separate, the resignations?
I would definitely do that, yes.
Okay, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, do we have a motion to accept the resignations of the two people listed?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasich?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Chancer?
Yes.
Mr. Bova?
Yes.
At this time, we will also be letting you know, we have two other that we're going to recommend to bring back for another year after they've spent retire, rehire. Bob Olament, eighth grade science, we're going to be recommending him here in the near future, probably in February, to come back as an eighth grade science teacher, and also Ronnie Harren, CH phys ed teacher, but just so you folks know that in advance.
We also need to hold on to the hiring that you mentioned, too.
Yes, Sandy Calvin and Lisa Stefanic.
Do I have a motion upon the recommendation of superintendent, do I have a motion to hire the two individuals?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasich?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Chancer?
Yes.
Mr. Bova?
Yes.
Also, at this time, we want to recommend again Stan Huddleston for that bus driver position.
Upon the recommendation of superintendent, do I have a motion to hire the bus driver?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasich?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Chancer?
Yes.
Mr. Bova?
Yes.
I'd like to recommend the approval of the substitutes, Nicholas Barn, James Carquito, Tessa Graham, and Kyle Keeler, along with Jason Baker.
Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, do I have a motion to accept or to approve these substitutes?
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasich?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Chancer?
Yes.
Mr. Bova?
Yes.
I'd like to recommend the approval of out-of-state overnight field trip request, that's your exhibit number three, grade five, to travel to Camp Fitch, North Springfield, PA, June 1 through June 3, 2015, for an outdoor education experience.
Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, do I have a motion to approve the out-of-state overnight field trip?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasich?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Chancer?
Yes.
Mr. Bova?
Yes.
What a great experience for our kids, they're always, it's phenomenal, what a tradition, so good to have. We're asking that if it would be a good thing to have for the change of the date of the regularly scheduled February board meeting. We'd like to suggest that Wednesday, February 11th now, would be the date for our regularly scheduled February board meeting.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock. Upon the recommendation of superintendent, do we have a motion to change the date of the regularly scheduled board meeting to February 11th?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Everybody can make it. Okay. Roll call.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasich?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Chancer?
Yes.
Mr. Bova?
Yes.
I'll go to the donations sections, recommended to accept the, per the enclosed list of the donations, that's your exhibit number four, totaling the cash donation of $8,853.
Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, do I have a motion to accept the donations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Do we keep a running total?
We do. And I do not have a total for you, okay? It's a lot of money. It's a lot of money, yes, it is.
Roll call.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasich?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Chancer?
Yes.
Mr. Bova?
Yes.
Now, it's also asked that we have a board work session, and we have a suggested date, Tuesday, January 20th at 9:00 a.m. I know Mr. Fry might have a little difficulty getting to that one, but he's going to work on his schedule and see if he can look at that.
Might have major difficulty.
Yeah. But I think everyone else has responded, that would be a...
That'd be fine, I'm not hurt.
We'll put you on a speaker phone.
Yeah, please do. I can't be doing that, however, because I'll be with somebody else, so...
On the recommendation of the superintendent, and we have a work session on Tuesday, January 20th at 9:00 a.m. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasich?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Chancer?
Yes.
Mr. Bova?
Yes.
I do have a few items for you this evening that the group didn't offer here. I'll piggyback on one of the ones that Mara mentioned about February 2nd, the state regional meeting. That's going to be one of a half dozen throughout the state that are going to be going on. They're starting those January 20th in Columbus, and then branching out into all of the regions. That's going to be one last push, one final discussion on the assessment piece. And if there's any changes or deletions to those sessions, we'll definitely bring that information back to you, folks, that you're updating. Mr. Tullio and I are going to be going to a teacher job fair, aspiring teachers, that's going to be actually at 9:30, we're scheduled to be at the Marone County Career and Tech Center on the 20th, while you folks are having your board meeting here, board session, work session. We're going to be going to, doing an interviews of aspiring teachers, those that will have their certificate already, or soon to be having their certificate. I don't know if you've noticed some conversations throughout the county, throughout the state, that there are fewer and fewer jobs, actually candidates to fill jobs of staff members throughout the state. They call it a cliff. We're very fortunate to work in a school system that is a coveted school system to get into. We will have candidates apply here, every year, but throughout the state, there's going to be a lack of educators available to fill jobs. And so, we're trying to get ahead of the game. We not only want to fill jobs for full-time people, but we are going to be recruiting for substitutes, so that we have enough candidates here, so that we're just not looking for a warm body to fill the seat. We actually want some certified people teaching these kiddos, even when our full-time teachers have to take some time. So, that's coming up here in another week.
Ask you a question?
Yes.
Past practice, we send administrators to Bowling Green, Kent State, Ohio State, Ohio University, and Youngstown to interview teachers, candidates. Have we been doing that?
Funny you ask that. At our county meeting today, they asked for people that are interested in going to do that, and I put my name in the hat, that I'd like to go, and maybe we'd even send a few of our folks specifically, for those high needed areas, definitely go and start that recruitment. Yes, we are going to be a part of that.
Having been a part of that, having gone to numerous teacher fairs, there's some really good people out there, and you get to talk to some very interesting people, and we have gotten some good teachers that way.
It's not only to bring them up board as staff members, but it's also, we're going to be talking to our real estate agents to also try to recruit them to come move here, too. That's going to be part of the process, because when you're traveling over three hours away to go to a university, they're not necessarily from northeast Ohio, they're going to be from other parts of the state, out of the state. So, it's also to put Canfield in their mind, to not only work here, but to possibly also live here. So, that's part of the process.
Now, you representing Canfield first, and then the county second?
And the county second. Oh, yeah, we're definitely looking out for ourselves first. All county boards meeting, as you know, that's coming up on the 28th of January. Dinner starts at 6:45. The Educational Service Center has scheduled a couple speakers for that night, and it's going to be directed towards college and career-ready. And it's a nice evening to get out and meet other board members that are going through a lot of the struggles that you folks do, trying to make decisions for a public institution. So, it's a nice night to see our colleagues out, and again, camaraderie for ourselves as well. Canfield Police Department, Travis touched on it briefly, but here is the identikit. I asked him if I could have one. All of our elementary students will have an opportunity to have this, and actually, their families have this for them to have personally. What they're going to ask to do is, the police will fill out the name and give the rest to the parent, but it has little ink here. We'll fingerprint each of the youngsters, and then this will go home in a packet, and the parent can affix picture, photo ID, and then also dental records of the youngster, and then allergies, and any footnotes that they might have, and they will have this on their child. And it's a nice opportunity and a collaborative effort with the Canfield Police Department. These are not free of charge, but they purchased these, and they are going to be the ones coming in and flooding our schools over the next couple of weeks of the elementary, and performing this task. And we're very fortunate to have them on board with this, and having this available for our parents. I remember I tried to do that with our daughter one time, and I think she was probably three, four years old. Bought the police department, wouldn't allow it to happen. By the time they're six, seven, eight years old, I think they're ready for it, so it's going to be nice to have available for them. I'm surprised the guys didn't mention this, I guess we'll say the best darn band in the land used the other. Had four Canfield alum performing, and have been performing all year. Alex, Mark, George, and Rachel, they had a story on local TV channel one morning, I think it was, the Case, Mr. Case was down there, and he had that, there's a photo, it's on our website, we tweeted it out. Just great conversation with these kids and the experiences they had, and it's nice to see. I think Coach Trussell started it years ago, where the connection was with the band, and Urban Meyer continues that today, and it's just, again, it makes the university that much better, and we're very lucky to have four of our graduates down there. One other, Lee mentioned it earlier, we are having some math people visiting Hudson over the next couple of weeks, and might be going to some others to see what their math series they're using. Last year, English Language Arts was a direction, along with Science Department at the high school, with some technology upgrades. This year, Mathematics Concentration, and again, they're doing some good things in those districts, and if we want to be top 10 within another, next couple of years, we do have to hook and crook to see what other people are doing, and again, what's going to be best for us. Our staff's excited to be able to bring something new, to give them resources to do that much better for our kids, and it's great to see that excitement.
That's all I have. John, did you want to touch?
You know, it's really great going last. I get to say ditto.
It's all been covered, so...
Yeah, I hear you.
Thank you for the great speech.
You know, it's really great going last. I get to say ditto.
It's all been covered, so.
I hear you.
Thank you for the great speech.
One other item, though, before you go tonight, I can't leave you without this. This is something that, we're going to have some further conversation in the district, but we may as well continue to talk about it. We like to see, and then revisiting it, and see if we can make it even better. This is just a draft of next year's calendar that we're looking at, and we're going to have some further conversation with staff throughout the district. But we are serious about having a couple days, start time, prior to Labor Day next year. Still giving off Labor Day weekend, along with a couple days because of Canfield Fair, and then going through. There continues to have some conversations throughout the county. We're very close to having a county-wide calendar. The spring break looks like it's sound, the around Christmas looks like it's sound throughout the county. In between the start and the end dates, pretty sound. The start time, there are some districts that will be starting that week before Labor Day. And I think, at least at this time, going at least a couple days prior to...
Before what you're proposing?
No, they're going even before us. But what we're looking at is just that Monday and Tuesday.
And those are organizational days anyhow. Not the teacher and services, but...
Right.
Those are the days you pass out books and get people organized and everything else. So, there's no real carryover.
Correct. So, having a few days off after that, I don't think there were any rough instructions as much as what you would think, especially midterm.
Along with that, will you be looking at potential start time changes and things? I've heard an awful lot about, you know, the start time for the high school in particular. I'm sure we'll be looking at busing and routing again.
We have been. If we can manipulate and move the, because of transportation, to only two routes, and have middle school and high school on the same route, we can bump back that high school start time. But if you remember the conversation right about this time last year, was, boy, we don't want our elementary kids starting first and high school last without any type of aftercare. That is a concern, moving that time, without that adjustment in transportation.
Speaking of transportation, and this is later, I know, but that Route 11 thing, are you, are they going to, you know, work with us at all that they don't start construction until after our first bus run, anything like, I mean, in the morning on a daily basis?
We've asked them to at least be cognizant of that, considerate of that. It's out of our hands. That will not even, I can't speak for them and say they won't think about it, but they're not going to move on that.
Once they tear up, what are they going to do? I mean, once it's torn up, they're not going to let anybody go in the lane.
They're going to, they're going to go.
They're going to go.
They're going to go.
They're going to go, yeah. Oh, yeah, it's going to be a disaster.
It's not going to be pretty.
No, it isn't.
We're going to have to definitely communicate with that, with our people, that bear with us.
We'll not be nice.
Safety of kids first. We'll know where their youngsters are. They might be on the bus a little longer, but at least you know they're safe.
When does that actually start, when's it projected to start?
Very shortly.
Right, I thought it's February.
Oh, this year?
Yes. When, in February?
Uh...
That's supposed to start already?
No, they keep moving this back. I would anticipate it starting February, March now. But you're right, it was supposed to have started in...
Well, I was at ODOT for a while, I think it's supposed to be in February.
They'll communicate it somehow.
As soon as we find out the exact date.
They have a couple clients at ODOT.
He will definitely...
Oh, okay, let's go.
Talking.
Is there anything else?
Round 11 and the turnpike?
Round 11 and the turnpike. Not at the same time, though. Same time?
The turnpike project's going out to bid this week, and they're projecting the start of that in February, March.
Of 2015?
This year.
Wow. They didn't communicate that with us.
Because they're doing the bridge over the turnpike going into Westbury Park on Gibson Road.
Gibson.
That's coming out at the same time. Because the street between the two communities is going to get started in March.
Multiplay, our...
They're going to open that up?
Yes. Our understanding from our parents are going to be that much more needed.
The bridge on Gibson's coming out completely. There will be no bridge there.
Where are you going to go?
Stone Bridge.
Yeah. The street to Stone Bridge is, that'll be a good thing for us for buses.
Right.
Because that street's going to, has to get built before they do the bridge. Those jobs are all getting released for bid at the same time, which is this week. And that's all going to happen this summer.
Turnover that way.
I have a question.
Sure.
Christmas Vacation, I just see over here it starts the 23rd, but it's not blacked out over here in green, so it does start the 23rd?
Again, we're not putting this up for vote yet.
But I mean, that's how this paper means.
We're looking at, the 23rd would be our final day of instruction.
Oh, it would be.
So, that would change.
Because over here it says winter break.[1769.23]